Order the commission meeting of Tuesday, January 19th, 2021. Now we'll stand for the flag salute and then followed by a prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Today, prayer will be held by Pastor Steve Gill of the Turon Community Church. Pastor, at your convenience.
Okay, let's pray. Our Father, we come before you this morning and we thank you for another day that you've given us. But Lord, as we look ahead, our hearts are weary. We see the evil that has come across our land and our country and affected some of our people. Father God, we pray for your protection and your guidance. I especially pray for this council, this commission that's coming together today, Lord, that governs our local area here, Lord, and just pray that you would give them wisdom and guidance on how to go about operating. Lord, we are in uncharted times and we can't rely upon our own knowledge and wisdom. We have to call upon you. You're the only one that truly knows what needs to happen. So Father God, bless these gentlemen today as they've come together and guide them in this meeting. Anyway, ask all these things in name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir.
You bet. Thank you.
Want to get it turned down?
Commissioner Sellers.
Okay. I only have one thing to comment about, and that's just to let everyone know it's the start of the meeting, that there will be a work-study session at four o'clock. And it's available on the YouTube. And because there's not enough room down in the room that we're going to have this in at the Public Works Department to enable the social distancing like we'd all like. So it's available on the YouTube and that YouTube site is on the Public Works Agenda for the Planning Commission. All right. Are there any public comments today? I believe there's one person, two, maybe a couple that want to comment with public comments that are not on the agenda. So please come to the podium and state your name, address, and please limit it to five minutes.
Sorry to bother you again. I guess I was here a couple of months ago. My name's Lyndon Roth. I'm from the county. I live out in the country. And this is in regards to the restrictions. And what I did was, what I find interesting is, last week, I think it was on Tuesday morning, I get my, I usually scan Hutch Post just for, I don't know, scan it just so I kind of know kind of what's going on. And I came across this article about a gal that was taken to Hutch Hospital. I think she was like thirty, in her early thirties. And she was in pretty bad shape from some medical issue. And the article said that the Hutch Hospital has 198 beds, but they didn't have any room for her. And the closest hospital that they could find was Salina. So they transferred her to Salina. As the day went on, that afternoon, I got a text saying that Hutch Hospital is down to seven COVID patients. And I texted back and I said, that's interesting because of my, of the article I just read, I was under the impression it was full. And most of them were COVID patients or a large percent of them were. That was the end of our discussion. We never, I wasn't really interested in that. But then later in the week, the governor talked about wanting everybody to be vaccinated. Obviously, everybody's got an opinion about that, including me, unfortunately. Leave that as it may. And then I later, I think it was on Saturday or Sunday, I saw that our local health department extended the restrictions until February 24th. Okay. I didn't read the article because I really wasn't interested, but I just saw that. For whatever it's worth. Now, I'm going to say, obviously, I'm intrigued. I don't know how to determine fact over fiction or what the dilemma is or anyway. Last, between Christmas and New Year's, my brother was here from out of state. And we got talking about it. And he had pulled up some CDC stuff because everybody trusts CDC. Or I guess they do anyway. And I put it down on a spreadsheet so I can kind of compare. And then he made it, looks better than what I did. And so he sent it to me because mine was very rough and it's normal. But this is a lot more professionally done and I'd like to, if you could, at least look at these numbers. And these aren't my numbers. If you don't like these numbers, then I take it up with CDC. There in the blue is where we got all this information. Now, this is the last 10 years. The U.S. Census of the last 10 years is the first column. The second column is total deaths of each year. You follow that? The third column, death changes from previous year. And if you go back just the last five years, if you add those total together and average them, there's usually an increase of total deaths of 40,000 from one year to the next. The highest being in 2017, 16,000, 69,000 more than the previous year. And the lowest being in 2019, 15,000 more than in 18. In 2020, we had 58,000 more deaths than we did in 19. But it's not anywhere alarming, in my opinion, if you go by these numbers. CDC also said that we had 303,000 COVID deaths. And if you only had 58,000 increase, I'm curious of where these other deaths come from. So what we did, I mean, the letters in red is strictly a projection on our part. I mean, and the breakdown for 2019, we couldn't find it on the CDC. I'm not saying it's not there. That is nothing, I mean, I'm just saying this is, they said, I mean, we couldn't find it. So what we did was we put a projection according to the previous year's, the increase. And those numbers in red, we added those together and we subtracted it from the 303. If those numbers go down to zero, I don't know, maybe that's confusing. And we still short 70,000 from the 303. Now, the other note that I would like to make is, I don't know what the definition of a pandemic is. I was told that according to the World Health Organization, the pandemic is when it goes from one country to the next. I don't know if that's true. I don't know what, to me, I thought a pandemic is when you have exceptionally more deaths than normal.
You got about one minute.
That is right?
No, you got about one minute left.
Okay. If that's true, then that bottom category, that bottom notes there, if it's 1%, we should have had 6,000, 6 million deaths instead of the 3 million. I mean, you can kind of read that because we took it 1%, 2%, 3%. That's all I, this is my numbers. Anyway, for whatever it's worth, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
What was Lyndon's last name?
Roth.
R O P P. Ma'am, state your name and address and you have five minutes.
When does the five minutes start?
Now.
Okay, so I won't hand out my papers now then?
Well, you can do that.
Okay, well, that's not included?
Oh, it's included.
Okay, well, I'm not going to hand it out. I'll hand it out afterwards. Okay. I listened to the Reno County Commission.
Your name and address.
Oh, my name is Connie Newcomb and I'm from Inman, Kansas, and we own property in Reno County. Last week, I listened to the county commission meeting. I listened to all the parts that I was interested in anyway. And I noticed there was a lot of information given about the vaccines, about how people, you're worried about people lining up, about the distribution and various parts of it. But there was a lot of information omitted. As you know, in Germany, in World War II, there was a lot of medical experimentation. And one of the kinds of experimentation was vaccines. And then there was great human disaster. People were treated like animals or actually worse. So after the, after World War II, they wrote up the Nuremberg Code that says that every person who receives medical experimentation of any kind cannot be coerced in any way, which mandates are coming on this, and they must be fully informed. This is including all hazards reasonably to be expected and the effects which may possibly come from participation in the experiment. The duty and responsibility for ascertaining the quality of the consent rests upon each individual who initiates, directs, or engages in the experiment. So I want to ask you, how is informed consent happening with its vaccine?
Ma'am, I understand that public comment is for people to make comment and not to ask the commission questions. It's not our place to reply. It's your place to make a statement to the commission. So as far as I'm concerned, I'm not going to answer the questions because that's what I understand what public comment is.
Yeah, well, that's why I sent you a letter ahead of time because in case there was someone here who could answer, because how are we going to know how an informed consent is occurring? Do, are the participants warned of the hazards? Do they know that people have died from this vaccine and that thousands of injuries have been reported? In Coffeyville, the public health nurses are opting out of administering this vaccine because they don't want to assume responsibility. The person who directs this experiment has the responsibility for the consent. Who in Reno County makes sure this person understands what consent means? Do you know anyone who is responsible for consent? Who is liable for injury and death? Because vaccines are a medical experiment, they will not work the same for everyone. No medical procedure is safe for everyone. So who is going to be liable for injury and death? This vaccine was tested on healthy people but will be given to unhealthy. Are they going to do medical examinations ahead of time to make sure and ask if you have autoimmune issues, if you have allergies? Are you going to go over the list of ingredients of these vaccines? I assume that you guys have looked at the ingredients of the vaccines and you understand a little bit that it's basically a chemical solution that is going to be injected into people. This, in the event of injury or death, does the person know who to contact? There is a place called injuredbycovidvaccine.com where you can get legal help and that may be available. People who have been injured by this vaccine have gone to doctors and the doctors have not known what to do. I'm sure you heard about the doctor in Miami, Florida, who completely lost his white blood count. He was 56 years old and the doctors worked on him for two weeks and he died of a stroke. And he was perfectly healthy before he got the vaccine, as far as they knew. Are you giving lists of doctors who know how to treat injuries associated with this vaccine? Are you making it clear that this vaccine has not been assured by the manufacturer as, that it will prevent COVID-19 and it will not prevent transmission or contagion? In other words, you can still get COVID-19 after you get the vaccine and you can still pass it on. Previous vaccines like this were disaster. The animals, when exposed to the real virus, most of them died. But there were no animal studies on this vaccine. Have you made people aware that natural immunity now is occurring and showing promising signs of being long-lasting? They found it's lasting as long as eight months. Of course, the COVID has only been around for a few months. Are they, is the health department testing for antibodies so that those who have immunity do not need the vaccine? If you have had COVID, you don't need the vaccine because you already have immunity. So are they telling people that if you've had COVID, you don't need the vaccine? Or are they testing for antibodies? And how will this vaccine return us to normal? Because we're still going to wear masks after the vaccine, so it's not even going to do any good. There are high-level experts who even question whether this is a vaccine, whether it's just an irreversible genetic mutation or if it's pathogen priming.
About one minute.
And so I am sorry that you can't answer questions. That's not very helpful to me. So are you going to get back to me and answer these questions? Are you going to send me a letter? I have these questions written down here so that you can know. But I just feel like it's very scary to say this will all line up for a vaccine, but we don't have information on it. We're not having accountability. These people could be injured. They could be injured for life. They could be injured from years from now on the vaccine. How is this going to be compatible with the flu vaccine? The flu vaccine increases your rate of respiratory issues by over 30%. And this mRNA vaccine is considered to be a risk to the respiratory system also. So thank you for listening. I am sorry that I'm not going to give any answers. That's why I sent this letter yesterday so that there would be people here who could answer the questions.
Mr. Chairman, when you're ready.
Go ahead. I would suggest that if anyone has a question over the vaccine, that they contact their own personal medical doctor. We're not in a position to be in a medical advisory. And a personal medical doctor is the one that, if you're individuals, you should be contacting as far as I'm concerned. Now, that's only speaking from me. But I think, I think that also our, our staff here with the health department would probably agree with that, that that's not our position, that it should be an individual's position to contact their own physician.
I'd like to make one comment, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, here.
As soon as Connie's done here. I agree with Commissioner Sellers as well that it's, Connie, it's very hard for the commission to have a back and forth. I mean, this is generally an open, public meeting for us to have our meeting and appreciate your questions. And it is a little unfair to say that you asked the questions ahead of time because you did not ask questions last night when you sent the email pretty late. And what I asked from you, and I think would be helpful from anyone that comments to the commission, that you give us questions ahead of time. And there's plenty of very capable staff that we can rely on to get your questions answered. Because I don't think this commission is saying we can't answer your questions or that we don't have the staff to do that. It's just, we need time and we need to rely on our health experts that we've hired to answer these questions. And so I just also wanted to say, I mean, I disagree with you. I trust the Americans that made this vaccine and I trust that our fellow Americans and health professionals that are recommending the vaccine. So I completely disagree with your position on this issue. But thank you for your comments today.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, I would encourage you to do your research.
Thank you, Connie.
Morning.
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 Please state your name and address, as normal, and you got five minutes.
I don't think I'm going to type five minutes, believe me. I'd like to welcome you. I wasn't here last year, last week, but anyhow, it's nice to have a new face. My name is Doug Smith. I'm from Arlington. I am the mayor there. And I get a little upset when I see people coming here. All of us are wearing masks. They get in, they get in here with their mask on. They pull them off, they talk about, they have the rights to do this and do that and do whatever. And then we want to extend that. We're supposed to be wearing our mask. But you understand, they're not doing, we're trying to protect ourselves and protect the ones who are wearing those. But they want to pin their rights on us saying that they don't have to wear a mask. My grandparents, my parents always told us, keep living. They keep living, they're going to run across somebody that does have this virus. Two weeks ago, I just buried my mom. I didn't have a chance to say goodbye to her because of COVID. I couldn't be there to hold her hand, to hold her or kiss her. COVID. Because some people are saying, I got the rights not to wear a mask. What about those healthcare workers who's putting their life on the line every day to take care of these people? What about these, the families of those healthcare workers? They have to go home and visit with them. And they're carrying that virus into their house. What about them? And now they say they don't want to extend this. Go out and tell those people who lost their parents, their loved ones, those who put their life on the line every day to help take care of those who don't want to wear their mask but want to have this free, I want to do what I want to do. I want to come in a group of people and party. They killing the rest of us who are trying to protect them. I mean, it tears me up to see that. Yes, this is America. We have the right. We have more rights than we know what to do with. But we forget about other people's rights. Because when our rights depend on them, it's not a right anymore. Don't fear me if I seem a little upset with that, but I do get upset because I care about people. I sometimes put my life on the line to protect people. But if we don't reach out and help one another and protect that individual next to us or the person that's sitting in this room, when are we going to be laying on that bed? What event going on our throat? What's somebody giving us a feed to? When are we going to stop imposing our rights on somebody else's? I'm sorry. It just, it's upset me. I wasn't going to say anything, but when I heard these guys keep coming in here going, you know, we, there's no numbers. There's numbers. One day, you might be one of those numbers. Unless you're right to die. But anyhow, I'm sorry if I get a little upset.
No, that's fine, Doug. This is what this, this time of the commission meeting is for. And I appreciate you taking time to come in and explain your views.
No, I'm sorry.
Don't be sorry. I've had occasion to work with Doug as mayor of Arlington. I appreciate his time. Anyone else out there? No? Well, since you've taken your time to come in here for the county health department, Carla or Karen, do you have any remarks you care to make or appreciate you setting in on this?
Good morning, commissioners. I think that there are, in communicating with you and listening to your concerns and community concerns, I know that we are hearing two things. Of course, number one, you want to know what our plan is and you would like the possibility for like online registration or mass registration. We hear you and we are working to that end. If it was just us, as far as the Reno County Health Department, we would probably have that in place already. And to you, however, I think that is short-sighted. I think it's very important for us to work with the other medical providers and the other medical providers in the community, as far as the hospital, the clinic, and Prairie Star. So in working together, there's going to be a little bit of delay. We should still have it to you this week. But we need to be, we need to respect each other's opinions and before we move forward and share that with you. And we are having a meeting on Wednesday, so we should have something to you this week. And that's our goal. But I think it's so much more important for us to come together as a group and then share that with you. And so we have a common message to you and so that it reduces any questions in the community so they understand that everybody in the community, this is our plan. So it reduces that confusion. And then number two, we do hear that they want online registration, both online registration or where they can call in. Because probably one of the first populations we will look to register is 65-plus. They may or not, may not have computer access. So we're looking at all those possibilities. And like I said, we should have an update to you this week. So just wanted to let you know that.
The rest of it will depend upon when the state gets the, appropriates it out, right?
That is the biggest thing. But we need to make sure we have our plan ready. So we are ready to just push that button. We've, we're working with a lot of people in the community that have been extraordinary in working with us to make sure that we do, that all of us do what's best for Reno County. On a vaccine update, we did get our second doses for Moderna, which we got it end of last week. That's what has not been updated yet as far as doses and, but we're studying that vaccine for the second doses today. So Karen and I will be getting our second doses today. And then same with the rest of the Reno County. So everybody is a 28-day. So that's going to be our big push this next month, is getting everybody's their second doses from that first dose. And then also us finalizing this plan. So should we get more vaccine for this Phase II and us given the authority to move forward from KDHE on Phase II, we'll be ready. So we've already requested that approval from KDHE. Dr. Polly has reached out to KDHE. So then we can move forward with the Phase II. Okay.
Any questions, comments from the rest of the commission?
I have a few again. Sorry. Appreciate the update, Carla. The commitment you made with this week, was that just getting more information or was that specific to a registration portal or what? What are you committing to this week?
I will do my best to try to get you an update on both the plan and registration this week. Again, we will work with these other organizations. I do not want to speak out of turn or what is not possible. And like I said, there may be a little bit of delay, but I think it's worth the delay because we all need to be on the same page. And it reduces the questions in the community so they know wherever they go, wherever they get the vaccine, that we're all moving forward together. And I think that's so important for the community to understand is, this is huge. We are so much further ahead than a lot of organizations regardless because of this plan. Because once it's put in place, it's a strong stabilizing foundation.
And I appreciate the significance and difficulty of what you're doing and appreciate all the hard work. I've heard from some concerned citizens that, you know, maybe there's not enough communication or it's still a little confusing. So I would encourage the health department to double down on the information that's outflowing. And if anything, you know, at least tell them that you're, you know, you're working on a plan. I know it's, I know it's really hard to get it right and not communicate in front of what you know. And, but, but I think we have seen some other counties in the state that are, that are a little in front of us on this. And especially with registration. And it seems like some in the community are confused as to what our plan is. And, you know, I think the plan is, we're working on the plan, right? You know, one of my constituents, you know, mentioned some other things that made some sense, you know, can we get, when we get the registration portal up, can we fill out some paperwork ahead of time, as an example electronically? They also mentioned that they were, you know, and I think some of the higher-risk individuals by way of age may be less connected via social media. And they asked for some kind of, I'd call them legacy communication platforms to be used such as phone calls or even texting might, might be helpful if they can register and get a text update on where they're at. And I know this is getting into the weeds, but anything we can do to solidify a plan with our partners this week would be great. This is the number one priority for myself right now. So I apologize for the extra scrutiny on your department, but I appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing.
Anything else? Thank you for being in attendance. Appreciate it. This time, are there any additions or revisions to the agenda as been presented? County Administrator?
No.
Daniel? Commissioners, freezing?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sellers?
No.
All right. Saying none. We'll continue to the consent agenda. With vouchers totaling $1,104,107.33. We have the CARE CRF vouchers totaling $497,168.87. Change orders of 2021 of seven, 10, and 12. We have an appointment of Sandy Pangburn to serve on the Reno County Health Department of We have an appointment of Sandy Pankburn to serve on the Reno County Health Department Advisory Board for a term ending in twelve thirty-one, twenty-three. An appointment of Aubrey Ness to serve on the Reno County Health Department Advisory Board for a term effective until twelve thirty-one of twenty-three. And that consists consists of the consent agenda. What does the commission choose to do?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the consent agenda items A through E.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the consent agenda motion?
I've got a brief comment, Mr. Chairman. And I might have missed it in the packet. I think it'd be helpful. I mean, I don't have any issue with either appointment, but I really don't know the people that are being appointed. And I think it would be great for the commission to to get just a briefing on who those people are and maybe references for them. Again, I don't, I just don't know them. And I think it would be good to brief the commission on on those people. Maybe Carla has it. Did I miss it?
Um.
I did miss it.
It's an Indian.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, but go right ahead.
I missed it in the packet. I'm sorry.
So Sandy is part of the Hutch Community College. And we do try to have a representative from Hutch Community College on our advisory board. Let me, I'll just go through as far as just guidelines, as far as the purpose. The advisory board will advise the health department and on health issues, evaluate the department's progress and serve as a liaison between the department and the community is the purpose of the advisory board. And Sandy, like I said, Sandy is replacing an individual that is has left the Hutch Community College. So they we try to have a representative from Hutch Community College on there. And then Aubrey is Aubrey Ness is from Hutch Regional Medical Center. And the previous person that was on the advisory board left the hospital. So it's replacing the members that had left in the community with that community representation.
Okay, and I need to apologize to staff and these nominees because it was in the agenda and I missed it. It's like, I can claim my newbie status for a little bit. It says six D right here, right in big, big bold letters. So I apologize. Thanks, Carla. That was it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any further discussion? We'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Creason?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes. All right. Business items. We'll take up item A of Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh-four. Authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation refunding and improvement bond series twenty twenty-one. And I'll turn this over to Kevin Cowan for Gilmore and Bell.
Good morning.
Good morning. So the last couple of times I've been before you, you adopted authorizing resolutions is what we call them, which described a project, authorized a project, and authorized bond funding for the projects. And those projects were the courthouse windows and improvements and the solid waste disposal improvements. Previously, you had authorized projects, including bridge replacements, repairs, reconstruction, and issued temporary notes for those projects. And the temporary notes are outstanding. So this resolution, we call the sale resolution, and it is the step that says we've authorized all of these projects and bonds for these projects, and now we want to go market and sell them. The additional component is a refinancing component on a small bond issue that remains from twenty-ten. And again, not a huge refinancing, but generates a little bit of savings. And so that's that's the other component. And if you notice that we're calling the bonds refunding and improvement bonds, with the refunding being the refinancing and then the improvement just being the permanent financing of the bridges, the courthouse, and the the landfill projects. And so this will authorize staff, bond counsel, Greg Varnberg with Raymond James, to take steps in the coming week or two to get these bonds priced, sold, and and come back to you in February with the results of the sale. So that's that's kind of big picture, what it does. And and I think some of this has been shared with staff, but I'll mention it here. At least the latest estimates, and I know you always have questions about this. And I always say, nobody has a crystal ball. But the estimate right now is that your aggregate interest rate or true interest cost in borrowing through these bond issues would be one point seven five percent, which is really good. And on a couple of the the projects, it looks like they'll be amortized over a shorter period of time. The windows amortized over five years. If you just looked at that, the true interest cost is point seven four percent. The landfill project is fifteen years, the bridge project fifteen years. And and so because it's a longer period of time, you have a little higher interest rates and and those have a true interest cost estimate of one point eight three percent. And then the refinancing of the series twenty-ten bonds that I mentioned, again, very short, would have an average interest cost of point seven eight percent. So, you know, I think when we we issued the temporary notes and even this year, when we've talked about the projects, there's always a question of was the market in in a good place? Should should we move now and go ahead and and issue the bonds? And the good news is now is a good time to be issuing the bonds based on on the interest rate. And I can't tell you that one day last week wouldn't have been better than today or the day you're gonna sell the bonds. But we are in a really historically low interest rate environment. So at least that's a bit of good news for you. So I think that's all I had in terms of a presentation and would be happy, happy to address any questions you might have.
Is there any questions?
Does does the one point seven five true interest rate include our expenses associated with the bond?
Yes. Yeah, if you, I'll give you an example. If if you wanted to look at sort of your true borrowing cost without regard to expenses of doing the issue, and that includes both the bond underwriter and and what their compensation is and bond counsel and state treasurer, that's more like one point one percent. I mean, I don't know if you have these numbers, but it's 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 an arbitrage yield, which is really the yield to both the investor and to you is more like one point one percent. I'll also mention, as I'm looking at it, your your coupons, when we get there and and sell these bonds, if we're talking about the coupon rate, those are gonna be higher than what we're talking about today. Those will be maybe in the threes and up to four. And and that's just a, I don't know if I would call it a quirk. It's a a factor in bond marketing these days because interest rates are so low that nobody really wants to buy a bond that has an interest rate that is that low on it, even though they understand that's the the current return they should get. And so they're willing to pay a premium to get a higher coupon in the hopes that maybe interest rates will rise and at some point they'll be able to sell at a premium as well. So what will happen is you'll have a higher coupon, but the bond investors will pay you more than the principal amount of the bonds. And so again, as we're talking about this, to give you a little context, the latest numbers showed that you would issue about twelve million in total for for the bond amount. But the premium on that roughly twelve million would be one point seven million. So issue twelve million, somebody's gonna pay you thirteen point seven million for the twelve million. So then that extra premium you get will drive down your borrowing cost and you kind of get to the the same place. So again, wanted to point that out so you can maybe have your expectations. You know, if you see these three percent interest rates and you say, well, Kevin was talking about ones and one point seven, it's the premium of the extra cash that you get that will drive down your borrowing costs. You'll you'll have a lower principal amount and a little higher coupon versus higher principal amount and and lower coupon rates.
Hey, maybe I missed it in the presentation because I was fiddling a little bit with my computer. But do we need to issue that much, Randy, with the the positive bids that we received on the the?
The the landfill amount when we actually issue the bonds will be lower. And I believe that's what Kevin, when he mentioned eleven point nine million to twelve million, it has the landfill project at two point nine million. So it has gone down, which wasn't in the original resolution.
Right.
The timing.
Yeah. So we and I'm glad you mentioned that. When I drafted these, and we always do this, and and this will change again based on marketing that day and and the exact amount of premium that you get. But we always try to use an estimate. So so yeah, that that number will change. And and that is good news that it won't be as large of a principal amount as maybe we thought it was gonna be a week or two ago because of the bids on the landfill. So good question. And and all those things will go into kind of the final marketing. And I I know Greg Varnberg has built into that some of these numbers that I'm working off of that he circulated yesterday. So that is all being addressed and and will be in the final, final bond documents.
So this resolution would contain just the offering for sale of the general obligation bonds with the final figure to be determined based upon the early estimates and then the bids coming in lower, correct?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Can you can you explain the the coupon? I I didn't understand that.
So the, and it really is a mathematical thing. If if you just got the kind of the true yield or market rate of interest, your issue size, and this is based on on, and it does include the the smaller landfill project, your total principal amount for bonds would be about three thirteen point seven million to pay for all of those things. And and you'd get kind of that effective borrowing cost that I I mentioned earlier, the one point seven. That would also be your average coupon. There'd be no difference between kind of your effective borrowing cost and what is on the bonds themselves. But and and this would be probably better, better answer, better question for Greg. But as I understand it, and and we've seen this a lot in the last ten years when interest rates have been so low, nobody wants to buy, I'll give you an example. In the first year, the really short maturities is where the interest rates and yields would be so low. The twenty, late twenty twenty-one, so it's about a one-year, one-year bond. The yield right now would be zero point two four percent. And and it's a a marketing thing where people don't want to buy or sell something that has the zero point two four coupon on it. And again, the the math works out, there's no difference. If it's zero point two four, interest rates go up, you're probably gonna have to to sell that at a discount to get it sold. Or if they go down, you'll be able to sell it at a premium. But again, nobody wants to buy that as the coupon. So the latest numbers that were estimated show these coupons of threes and four percents, they get printed on the bonds, and that's what's out circulating. But the effective borrowing cost and the effective yield to the investor is still gonna be the zero point two four and zero point two nine and these these zeros and one percent interest. But to make that happen, they have to pay you a premium to sort of drive down your borrowing cost and drive down their yield to where it is in the market. So again, if the coupon is three, but that's much higher than the market, then they should pay you as the seller a bunch of premium because they're getting a premium interest rate, premium to the market, and they will. And that you'll generate the premium and that drives down your borrowing cost. And then the same will be true if if somebody in the secondary market wants to sell these, they're gonna have this three percent coupon that's higher than market. If they want to sell it, they'll be able to sell it at a premium. And that's the best I can explain it in terms of why. It's just.
So do they give us cash?
Yeah.
So they so they're essentially, we we sell something at a higher than market rate and in return, they they pay us more upfront?
Right. So you're hopefully, and I think mathematically this always works out. I just, I don't have side by side. But you, and I mentioned earlier that your principal amount right now is estimated to be eleven point, what did I say, nine million with the higher coupons. And if you didn't have the higher coupons and generate the premium, your principal amount would be more like thirteen point seven. So eleven point nine with higher coupon rates will lead to the same debt service as thirteen point seven. But then with the kind of market coupon rate, so you end up in the same place. You just, you get more principal now to kind of buy down your project cost, but know your interest cost will be a little, little higher over time.
I guess I have a question of our county administrator and maybe to better update me. Last week, you gave us some ending balance funds for the county. And of those, there's two O O eight solid waste with a balance of six point three million and O one three solid waste reserve of five point one million. I think I recall that we have to keep a reserve for
Post-closure.
Closing the landfill at some unknown date in the future, and the state requires that. Is that the latter fund, the O thirteen?
Yes, that is.
Okay, so why do we need six point three in the O O eight fund?
There's every year annually, there are capital costs. So with the capital improvements, it goes up and down depending on the equipment that's being purchased. And that was kind of, if you remember in the study session with Megan and SCS, they went over the, I guess, the financial scenario of what rates are needed for the next fifteen, twenty years. And if you remember, the the cash balance goes up and down based on the rates we charge for customers and then the capital expenditures that are planned for the next ten, fifteen years, whether it's self-expansions, equipment, other purchases. So it's good to keep that cash in there.
And those predictions projections included this fund balance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The fund balance, and it also included the two hundred and fifty thousand or so a year in bond payments.
Okay, thank you.
Essentially, that reserve is utilized in in most equipment purchase and they need to open up or increase sales to handle the volume of waste material.
Yes, it's kind of with all capital projects or other than this expansion, it's kind of pay to go. So we want to have that cash that we can pay for the items that we need them.
Okay. Any further?
Chairman, I would make the motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh-four, authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation refunding improvement bond series twenty twenty-one.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh-four. Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Creason?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Hurst?
Yes. And want to thank you, Kevin, for all your work and
You're welcome. Thank you.
Information provided to us.
Hopefully, I'll be back in February with with more good news after we sell the bonds.
I think so do we.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. Discussion of a future resolution to cancel certain county warrants by Donna Patton, county clerk.
Morning, commissioners. Donna Patton, county clerk. This is just the resolution that we do every year to cancel two thousand and eighteen outstanding warrants. We are going to put it on our website and with a number of six nine four two nine three five. If anybody sees their name on here and they would like to get their check reissued, then we will get that taken care of form. then we will get that taken care of form. This is just to get it out there. I will be back on February second for the final approval with the new resolution that's updated.
Any question regarding county warrants? Any explanation needed? Okay. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is discussion of policy on commission meetings. And Randy, would you like to bring that forward?
All right, Commissioners. It had been mentioned to kind of draft a policy, guidelines for future commission meetings that would include kind of the business meetings, when they take place, any special meetings, work sessions, which are being followed now, but this puts things in writing, and then the procedure for agendas, agenda background information, the protocol, public comment, executive session, so, and that was all included in the packet. What this also does is kind of, as previously mentioned, that if the commission desires to go to two meetings a month or every other meeting, this has in it that it'd be the second and fourth Tuesdays of every month, along with the fifth Tuesday. There are four fifth Tuesdays in 2021, and because of APs, went ahead and put that in there as there would be a fifth Tuesday meeting unless canceled the prior week. If there's not business items that, or there's something that comes up, you guys want to cancel that meeting, it's put in there for the procedure. The number of business items does not change, so the, I guess, the amount of work technically by the commission does not change by having fewer meetings in a month. It just means the meetings may be a little longer when you do meet, so that's kind of what it changes. It gives more time for preparation of meetings, business items. I had sent out a draft, and I took some different input from everyone individually to see what changes from the original draft, and so we created this draft. Are there any questions, or do you want me to read over any specific parts of it?
What does the commission wish? Did you like it, Red?
No.
Well, there's some substantial changes in policy here, so I think it might be worthwhile to, and my suggestion would be is to maybe go paragraph by paragraph, and Randy, you read it, see if there's any reaction by the commission, pro or con, or changes to that paragraph, because I know you asked for all input from the three of us, and you used parts and pieces of our input, but there might be some items in here still that a certain commissioner would like to discuss amending that paragraph. So, this is a pretty important document, I think, for the future, including the change to biweekly meetings. So, if the other commissioners don't mind, I would like us to kind of go through it paragraph by paragraph.
That's fine with me. Public will have notification of it, too.
Yes. Okay, the...
Start with the policy. I don't think the purpose is necessary.
Correct. Policy is just, and this says effective February 2021, the commissioners will hold a regular business meeting on the days indicated below, and then that is where then that leads right into the second and fourth Tuesdays, along with the fifth Tuesday in there. So, it does say effective 2021, Board of County Commissioners will only hold a regular meeting on the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month if needed. When there is a fifth Tuesday in any month, a regular meeting will be scheduled for the purpose of transacting regular business. Any cancellation of the fifth Tuesday will be announced the week prior to a fifth Tuesday, and then it'll follow the state statutes of notifications and open meetings.
I have one question on that, Randy, I'm sorry I didn't get around earlier. The if needed, is that really necessary?
That's there in case, in case there's maybe close to a holiday, or there's a time in the year that there may not be something on the agenda, or there may be very little, if it gets slow, that you guys have the option to cancel. That's the only reason for that.
All right. I guess I'd like to expand a little bit on why it's being suggested to go to bi-monthly meetings. I think, and I'll just express my own point of view here, is that the county commission's job through the last fifteen years has changed substantially with the hiring of county administrator, which in my opinion, and I won't go into the details, should be a county manager, but he is called an administrator. We hire a professional administrator to run the county offices and all the division directors to report to that person. I feel that the commission should be more into policy than into daily management of the county. If we have a good administrator, he should, he or she should be taking care of the policies that the county commission direct. I also have been on this commission for two years now, and just as today, we have very little on our agenda, and I think that we could go to two meetings a month and still have it done in a timely manner. I was on the Hutchinson City Commission. I believe that John Deardoff told me yesterday, it was twelve years ago, when Hutchinson City Council went to bi-monthly meetings. They found that it gave the administrative department of the city and the department had more time to do their work because they didn't have to sit and wait for us to call them in on a weekly basis. And from John Deardoff's opinion, which I respect highly, it's been more efficient for the city to go to those bi-monthly meetings. So, for that reason, I'm in favor of going to the bi-monthly meetings, and I like the if in there for the fifth meeting, such that if we don't have enough to do, we don't need to have that meeting. The county manager or county administrator is sending us updates daily or bi-daily on various things, and so the commission is updated, knows what's going on within the county, and I think bi-weekly meetings are satisfactory to run the business of the county.
I'd like to echo Commissioner Sellers' comments. I think this is a prudent move to increase the efficiency of administrative staff, especially Randy. I know it takes a long time to prepare for these meetings, and I'm happy to put in more time on a semi-monthly basis for longer meetings if needed. I do think we can operate more efficiently. I think it's easy to potentially look at this as a reduction in the commissioner's workload, and I think it's not the case. I mean, we, if anything, you know, it's hard to see what goes on outside of meetings, but, you know, from my time as mayor at the city of Beulah and just, you know, my brief time here, it seems like eighty percent of our work is done individually outside of these meetings, and I would not expect that to change. So, I think, I believe everyone on this commission has a commitment to continue, you know, all of our obligations, and this is not a reduction in work. It's a way to increase our efficiency and help staff do what they need to do on a daily basis and get out of their hair a little bit. And I know even for me, it takes a while to prepare for these meetings, and clearly I didn't do a good enough job earlier, but I would appreciate a little more runway to prepare as well, and I'm happy to commit more time as needed to make sure we fill in any gap for this change, but I certainly support this change as well.
My first thought was about communication. Or does this decrease any communication? I don't, I agree with my fellow commissioners that I don't believe it does because I think our administrator has done an excellent job with his weekly reports to us, and if we have questions, we can do that. And also, it doesn't change anything in our relationship with the citizens of our district or the county because we're always available, whether it's a phone call or whether it's an email, and we can pass that information on to our administrator or whoever has, can answer that question. And so, I'm in agreement with my fellow commissioners on this, especially when we get into the next paragraph.
Okay, for the meeting agenda, the state said an agenda for all meetings...
They skipped the paragraph, I think.
Special meeting, work session.
Sorry. Special meetings and work sessions may be called by the chairman of the board or a majority of the county commissioners, or when required by state statute. When a special meeting or work session is called, the chairman shall notify the county administrator, who in turn shall notify the other county commissioners, and then, of course, notify the public and the press. This originally, I think, just said that, the original draft said called by the chairman of the county commission, and it has changed to allow a majority or two or more commissioners to also call that when needed.
I think this is important that for a future meeting, once we have it every other week, that if something comes up that we need to have some information on, that we can spend a little time to have that information to be able to prepare for the next commission meeting. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but that's, I think, a good point.
Okay. The meeting agenda, an agenda for all meetings of the Board of County Commissioners shall be prepared by the county administrator's office. The commission chair may be consulted with for special agenda items. Agencies, organizations, county departments, and citizens desiring to meet with the Board of County Commissioners may be placed on the agenda by contacting the county administrator's office. The county administrator may, at his discretion or after a request from commission chair, establish an agenda date and time for the requesting party in accordance with this statement of policy. The deadline for being placed on a business meeting is noon on the Wednesday preceding the business meeting unless the commission requests a late addition. Some of the changes on here were that it originally just said the county administrator's office will take care of the agendas. This put in here that maybe, that the commission chair may be consulted for agenda items after some feedback from a couple of you, and then it also, on the deadline, the commission can request a late addition, and we will try to get those agendas out with going, if this is approved, and go to the bi-weekly meetings. It'll, we'll try to get those out by Thursday afternoon evening instead of Friday morning to give you a little bit more time to prepare for those. The part about the county administrator may, at his discretion or after a request from the commission chair about establishing an agenda date and time, that kind of refers to if someone makes a request and we need to do some research, doesn't mean it's going to be the very next meeting if they make a request. We have to do a little bit of background information, so that gives us the latitude to discretion to choose a future meeting to where we can be well-prepared for.
Randy, was this one of the ones you had mentioned that there was some conflicting points of view between commissioners? And so, I might bring up my point of view and ask my fellow commissioners their position. One thing that wasn't in here that I think Randy tried to arbitrate into this a little bit was, you know, and this has nothing to do with Randy, it's just how I feel agenda should be handled in general from, I believe this is the commission's agenda and should be controlled by the chair of the commission. I completely understand and believe and agree that the county administrator should have a significant role in the development, but at the end of the day, this is the meeting of the commission, and so I had made a change in paragraph one to include with the advice and consent of the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. I'd be willing to drop consent. I mean, I think that may be a little too strongly worded, but I think it's important that the chair of the commission controls the agenda because this isn't the meeting of the county administrator, even though I believe wholeheartedly that the administrator will present what we need. I think technically it should be different than it's worded today.
So, would you, again, state where you feel that this should be...
First sentence under meeting agenda, after county administrator's office insert with the advice of the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. And I had with the advice and consent, I think at the end of the day, that my personal belief is the chair is the authority on what is placed on the agenda and what is not. I think the commission itself can override that in the meeting, but I think it's common practice, generally speaking, for the chair of any legislative body to control the agenda.
So, your suggestion is after administrator's office, you would say with advice and consent of board chair?
Yes.
Okay, personally, I have no problem with that because I think the procedure that we're currently under is working, and certainly the chair has the right to be involved in that agenda. What I would suggest is that after we go through this, we'll make a motion to adopt this policy based on what is written and suggested changes, so.
And I don't know if maybe...
Would it be better to do them one by one?
No, I think it might be fair to ask staff's input on that as well.
And Commissioner Friesen? What about, because I did, that's where I added the commission chair may be consulted for special agenda items. The thought behind that was most of the items that you'll see on the agenda, we don't really have much choice, other than maybe the order of items because they have to be done, but when the special items, that would be more discussion topics that I agree that should be what the county commission, commission chair wants to talk about. But with your, because I do have your edits in front of me, too, of what you sent, what if it was administrator's office in consultation with the chairman of the board?
Yeah, I think so. I hear your point about, I still think that's the, I still think it's chairman's prerogative to put something on the agenda or not. I think it's your obligation to bring something to this commission if the chairman does not want something on the agenda that is required by law. It's a very small nuance. It's just I think there could be a rare occasion where there may be disagreement between the administrator and the chair, and the chair needs the authority to, I just don't, I don't like reducing the chair's authority in this policy. I think it would naturally sort itself out if the scenario you brought forth occurred within the commission chambers, but...
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, change this as your guys' policy. I mean, and from my position...
I mean, and from my position, I, I, I know who I report to, so obviously not gonna-
And, and that's why I said this is not about you, Randy.
Yeah.
I think it's just-
So, Daniel, Commissioner Friesen, you would rather have administrator's office per, uh, with advice and consent of the chairman, instead of the change in the next sentence from May to will, you'd rather have the first?
Yeah, and I, I can see the, the county counselor furiously writing notes, and I think I might, at the end of this, I was gonna plan on asking that this be set on the table for a week, um, for further consideration. And so, there may be some wordsmithing that needs done. I, I think I've done about as good a job as I can explaining the position and, and maybe the staff could sort that out, or if, if you'd like, we can keep, my, uh, my, again, my, my, the, my word wording here was with the advice and consent of the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, if, if there's still some-
I, I, I agree with your, uh, theory that this meeting is the commission's meeting. And so, I, I, I accept the, uh, the, the change that you're asking for, and, uh, I don't think in, in ninety-nine percent of the cases, it's gonna change. But I think the, what you're saying is that the commission chair directs the, uh, the agenda.
Ultimately, yeah.
And I agree with that.
Yeah, if I go on, sorry, the, the only other thing I had, and this, I would just lay this, uh, on the table for you guys to consider, um, I'm okay either way, but I put in a, an, uh, an option for the chair to allow something past the deadline, and maybe that's a, uh, maybe you disagree, but it was in the last sentence of meeting agenda, and after business meeting, it said unless otherwise permitted by the chairman, um, they just gave another-
Instead of commission chair?
I was trying to be consistent. I think it's chairman of the Board of County Commissioners, I think is the way it's written throughout here, but whatever the consistent use is.
So, you're, that sentence is the deadline for being placed on a business meeting is twelve PM on the Wednesday preceding the business meeting unless the commission requests a late addition?
Unless otherwise permitted by the chair, of chairman of the Board of County Commissioners. So, um, you know, Randy could consult with the chair, or the chair could say, I want this, uh, you know, placed on the agenda even though it's past the, the meeting deadline.
One observation with this is, at the beginning of each meeting, you guys kind of can add items anyways with the protocol, so I'm not, I just want to throw that out, that you have that opportunity at each meeting.
Yeah, and, and I agree with that. I, I think the, the, the point, there's a little bit of time in between when, when the agenda's published and, and maybe, again, this is nitpicky, I, I'm just, the one thing that the, my two edits here were primarily concerned with was just a restriction too, too far with some of the latitude the chair is, I think, generally given. I know some of this is important, just so we all know what the rules of the road are, but, um, I, I, I like a little bit of latitude generally. I mean, I'm sorry, commissioners, I should've printed out my red lines ahead of time.
I, I'm not having too much trouble with that last sentence.
Okay.
Because of the fact that we do have, uh, item E as additions or revisions to the agenda that day, uh, for something that comes in after that time period. Say it comes in on a Friday, uh, and, uh, I think we've had excellent communication with regards to, uh, any information that comes in late from the administrator of, of notifying regarding that. Uh, so, I'd like to see it, what you have in print.
Okay.
All right? There you go.
Printed out. Um, after Commissioner Friesen had sent that to me, that's where I added the very last, unless the commission requests a late addition. So, it just said the entire commission, it didn't specify the chair. We could easily add chair in there.
I, I, I think it's good that, that-
It's the same thing.
That every commissioner has an opportunity to do that.
And I, I guess my thought for you guys to consider is, would it be the commission chair, one commissioner having that authority in the policy versus individual commissioners? So, a scenario would be if Commissioner Sellers had an item, someone contacted him Friday morning, the agenda had already gone out, he wants to put it on. This allows this to be put on, and then we would notify everyone. The other way, if it's the chair, it would just be, I would take what Commissioner Sellers wanted, contact Commissioner Hurst as your chair this year, and then put it on. So, it's just whatever process you guys prefer.
I think, I think generally, it's, it's, it's always the chair. I mean, it's just kind of a, this, um, a, a special authority granted outside of this, 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 you know, us acting as a body to where, where they can, they, they can drive that. I think it's our obligation as individual commissioners, if we'd like something, um, to, to raise it at the beginning of the meeting and either, um, obtain consent from the majority or, or make motion to change the agenda. But, I think generally that, that, maybe I was speaking a little bit to just tradition. Generally, the, the, the chair is the only one with that authority to, to change the agenda or, or make the agenda outside the meeting, but maybe I'm being too picky.
So, I can, so, just add unless, you want it, you guys want us-
I think you've got the-
Per, what he said, otherwise permitted by the chairman of the board? Cause that's easy, unless-
Yes, I, I think I'll, I'll agree with Daniel here, unless the chair of the Board of County Commissioners requests late addition, because I think we still have, as, as Commissioner Hurst just said, we have an opportunity in the agenda for any commissioner to suggest another agenda item with, by getting two votes to get that onto the agenda. So, I think that this paragraph should be in both places, the, the chair of the Board of County Commission.
Yeah, by having that on there, if you don't happen to agree with the chair, you can bring that up again.
But you need another commissioner to agree with you to get it on the agenda. Moving right along here.
Thank you.
Sorry. Agenda background information.
Okay, and this, this creates a template, I won't read this word for word, discussion for any agenda items, whether it's from an agency, a department, any outside person has a basic template that we would use. It states that, um, the, so departments, officers, agencies, organizations, boards, which are funded or created by or through, the county commission will be required to submit background information in a professional memo format. And this memo will basically have agenda subject, background information, legal considerations, if there are any alternatives, a recommendation, or a request of what they're asking for, and then finance, financial considerations. And it says digital copies of the background information must be submitted to the county administrator's office by the deadline stated above.
I think that's a good change, so that everything's coming to us in the same format. Some of it has been that way in the past, and some has kind of been handed out at the meeting, and I'd rather have it all ahead of time.
What?
Good change.
Randy, what was the, when, when we had the little study session downstairs?
Mm-huh.
There was a, um, a briefing about electronic agenda items. Is, is that something we're gonna talk about later, or?
Yeah, that's actually on my report, I was just gonna mention that Granicus, I do have all those options that you guys requested at the study session, and had asked for a discount on bundling, and they were gonna get back with me, so I'm hoping at the first meeting in February to have that in front of you for the, and this would go into that of, here's our, I guess, our template, here are the fields that have to be filled out by internal people, and then external, if it's a agency, we can send them kind of a template of here's, here's what you need to fill out, so that the, the intent is for the county commission to have as much information before the meeting, so you guys can research it then, as possible, instead of showing up here with, I wanna talk about this item, and then you guys not be prepared for the information.
And I think this last paragraph, it's on the next page, but the last paragraph of the agenda background information is important in the fact that, uh, those who wanna come in and talk about a specific agenda item, rather than just the earlier, uh, public comment, uh, can have that opportunity. What do you think with regard to that?
Okay. Commissioner Hurst, I'm not certain what you're suggesting here.
Well, I, I just-
Or, or you're agreeing with that paragraph?
I'm, I'm agreeing with that.
Okay.
I just say it's important that not only does that include agencies that we work with, but also any citizen.
Where, so, are you, are you suggesting that, and I think this has been a bit of tradition that we've done in the past, where if, if somebody wants to speak to an item on the agenda, that they be given time during that part of the agenda?
I, I wanna continue that, yeah.
What's, I'm just curious on staff's opinion on that.
On items on the agenda?
Injecting public comment during the commission's scheduled agenda items.
I think it depends on the issue, if they are a party directly associated with that issue, and they're here, I mean, and it, say it's a planning and zoning that has already been passed, and you guys wanna say, hey, do you have any comments on this? Or, as you've mentioned, I think there was a guy with a parking lot or a restaurant a few months ago, you wanna welcome him to the community and say, how are you doing with this business, that kind of issue. But if it's, you have an agenda item, there's a department that has a request, say it's the pay and comp study that has been discussed and, uh, that went out to bid. Now, if there's a citizen that wants to come and complain about that, that's not really where the commission meeting is meant for that. They can contact you guys individually by email or phone call if they have an issue with the policy versus having every business item be debated. That, that's my thought.
So, many business items are purely administrative. You know, they're, they're not policy matters, they're, they're not legislative matters, uh, they're not something prospective that'll even be done, and I, I don't see any purpose to be served by opening up those routine administrative matters, uh, to, to the public. Yeah, I think it could, it could, it could certainly burden down your, your climate you're here, but if you feel less necessary, fine, but I, I think I agree with Randy on that.
But how, how do we pick and choose?
Well, there's certainly some judgment involved. I, I think if you, if your policy is to allow it, then you don't have any choice. I mean, somebody, any number of people wanna talk about it. Many times, I, I mean, I know it's of concern to you that, that your, your meetings be expedited and you do them efficiently, and so, I think my comments ought to be understood in that vein, and I think some judgment has to be involved, or you're, routinely, there not gonna be anybody here wanting to talk about that, but you could certainly find yourself in a situation where people wanna argue about something that's, that's really positive. You've already determined that something should be spent, it's a matter of, maybe I bring in the formal agreement on a, on telephone service, which I'm gonna be doing pretty soon or whatever. There's an example of a, of a contract that's been, you've approved the, the concept, uh, you've generally understood the terms, and now you've got the formality of, of approving it. At that point, it seems to me that that's not something the public should participate in, but that's just my thoughts. And, and perhaps, you know, if you, if you make it absolute in the policy, then, and the chair doesn't, I need to mean the chair could have some discretion in that regard, maybe that's the way to, to, if the policy sets, the chair has some discretion to limit that, uh, participation, then, then perhaps your, uh, my efficiency concerns could be addressed.
I, I, I think, I like, I like the, um, the protocol that we've been using in concept, um, where things are, um, comment related to an agenda item is, is reserved for the agenda item at the beginning. I think it could be helpful to clarify further with the public on what that means, you know, and, and, you know, take the input, um, and then, you know, the chair, I suppose, could pick when, but generally speaking, it's, it's helpful at the beginning, you take the input, and then you have the more formalized presentation, so there's not this kind of rebuttal, kind of debate. But, I, I think it's important, you know, I, I've been involved in county agenda items in the past where it's a, it's a bit hard to have a conversation with the commission in a public setting when momentum is so far gone. And, um, so I agree in some ways that it's important that the public understands that communication ahead of the meeting with the individual commissioners is very important. And if you walk in here and expect, um, a massive change, it's very hard when there's momentum on a, on a, on a subject. So, I think, you know, I think, I think some further development on the public comment section that we're, I think we kind of fell into this and we're not even here yet, but the public comment section about how we're going to split where people comment, and some advice as to what the best way to do that is, um, you know, I made some comments already with some, some people that have come here to speak and via email, that it's, to me, it's so important that we advise the public that written comments are very valuable. You know, comments with factual evidence and citations are very valuable. When you come up and, and just orally present and, and we don't have any basis, it, it's, it's very, it, it doesn't hold a lot of weight. And I think this has been a, an issue that's been, um, um, kind of grown in size because of, because of our current environment with COVID and, and just all of the information out there. And I'm kind of rambling, but I guess my point is, the public comment area may need some more work to help the public understand how best to get their information to the commission.
Yes, I would agree with you that it's very, very much timeliness to have all the factual information sent to each commissioner, uh, well ahead of time. Anyway, I, I don't-
And there were, and just to kind of go back, there are two different areas, talks about comment, right underneath the meeting protocol, it does say persons attending meetings of the Board of County Commissioners are allowed to address the board on agenda items only when they have been recognized by the chairman. However, no person has a right to be disruptive, and such action will not be tolerated. Comments derogatory to individuals are not tolerated at public meetings. So, that's the part, I think, when you talk about, it's on the agenda. If the chair feels there's someone in the audience that could give great input, and it's not, as the county counselor mentioned, it's not really an administrative issue, it's more of a bigger policy that you do want input, that gives the chair the, I guess, the option to say, do you have something to say about this? I see you're in the audience.
Where we have, we have already had, like you suggested, uh, and you know, that info-
Where we have, we have already had, like you suggested, and you know, that information to us that could be transmitted by each commissioner at the agenda time, that may well cover what's-
I, yeah, I, my, my point is it's maybe just some, some education. It's, I, I think, like I said, people believe that, you know, there's, I, I think, I think they look at this as kind of just the silo of the conversation and, and the effort when the, the staff and legal counsel and individual commissioners are working throughout the week on an issue and, and momentum builds and just communicating to the public that written comments are typically more valuable. And, and coming in here to solidify your position versus starting the conversation is, is more valuable and just how we communicate that. Because I want to hear from as many people in Reno County as possible on these issues. It's, it's just hard to do that in, in a-
Yeah, I think we could probably go on because of what you've mentioned the other here. And, and we can look at this, if we need to look at this again, but, but I guess Randy has brought out that paragraph underneath the meeting protocol kind of answers a lot of those questions, I think. So go ahead with the agenda schedule, meeting protocol.
Okay. The agenda schedule does say the meetings of the commission will begin at 9:00 AM on the meeting day unless otherwise provided, in case you guys need to postpone or move it back in the day and notification will go out. And then it does state the county administrator will, will maintain a rotating report schedule with county directors to provide the directors the opportunity to meet and present updates to the commissioners on a periodic basis. And that's where for 2021, I have it where all directors will be here in front of you at least one time, starting this month. The first one will be Department of Aging, RCAT Director Barbara. She will be here next meeting to give her first update along with an agenda item. And so we'll, starting in February, I think for this first five months that we start this, there'll be two, two directors a month and then it'll go one a month toward a later part of the year. And this does not take away from directors coming in when they have agenda items. This is just for them to talk about what's going on in their department, big projects they have, concerns they have, that they can have a chance to interact with the commission in addition to the monthly written reports, kind of update reports that they will provide on a monthly basis. Any questions or thoughts on that, that meeting protocol? This is the meetings of the commissioners will be convened by the chairman at the time stated on the meeting agenda or soon thereafter if circumstances allow. The agenda may be amended at the beginning of each meeting by approval of the board. Agenda items will be reviewed as follows with changes to the order of items made at the discretion of the commission chair. Has calls, call to order, pledge of allegiance and prayer, welcome and announcements, public comment, additions or revisions to the agenda, consent agenda, business items, county administrator reports, county commission reports, and then executive sessions when needed. And then it goes into about the chairman has the authority, the option to recognize people that want to speak on an agenda item.
Do, do we publish something for people when they sign, to sign up, just a protocol? Do they know what, they know that, you know, the chair will say when you're-
There isn't anything right now. We can do that though.
I think that would be helpful, too.
And then after discussion of an agenda item, the Board of County Commissioners may take action by formal motion. A formal motion must be stated, seconded, and voted on by public vote of each participating commissioner. No secret ballots will be allowed. That's just standard, what you guys are already doing. The public comment, this section says the Board of County Commissioners have chosen to allow for public comment from Reno County citizens. The public comment period is for individuals to make short and concise comments to the governing body on items not on the agenda. Registration to speak during public comment is required at the beginning of the meeting on a provided signup sheet. If there is a meeting that has large amounts of public comment requests, the county commission may limit each speaker to three minutes or less to comment. Additional restrictions may be made by persons that speak on a routine basis. The commission chair may also limit the number of speakers that are repeating the same comment as prior speakers to expedite the meeting while also allowing for reasonable public comment. And this is kind of a reminder, it's not required that you even have a public comment in each meeting, but we have it in here because we know Reno County Commission does want public comments. And then the next one, just mentioned that you guys-
Going back, a question on public comment. In the middle there, you talk about if there's a lot of people, we might limit it to three minutes or less, the, the commission. But nowhere here do you talk about the fact that public comment will be five minutes or less. Should that be in our policy?
We can put that in there on the normal basis as five minutes. I did the three minutes because I think usually you guys tell the person they have five minutes, but if, this gives you the option, if there's 10 people that want to speak, that you can say at the beginning, it's going to be three minutes or two minutes. But we can put in that normal public comment is limited to five minutes.
I think that would probably be good.
And I, I think I would say not more than. And truthfully, for most people that come before us with a statement of what their beliefs are, I don't really believe that they even need the five minutes, you know? I think if they're prepared and they have some information to hand us or something like that, I think that's five minutes or less is very, very generous on, on statements to us.
Is there a way to, you know, I, I think we had last year, at the end of the year, had a few disagreements amongst commissioners on, you know, who was perhaps like providing, you know, kind of expert or, or kind of specific information, you know, like the, the bond council, a person that was here. Obviously, that's not the same thing as, as, as someone walking in with, with a comment on something on the agenda. How do we, how do we signify that in this policy so, so it's understood amongst the commissioners? That difference.
So you want, like, if there's an expert, say it's a doctor or a engineer that has a specific degree of expertise that you want to allow more than five minutes? Is that-
Well, I, I know there was a few meetings last year that where there was some, some disagreement as to who was a public speaker and who was kind of an, an expert. And I generally would defer to the chair on, on their ruling on that. But anything that could, so there isn't a disagreement would might be helpful.
Isn't that also a case, Commissioner Freezon, where that expert is asked to come in by a department head or by someone?
That may be a, a very good way to delineate that, you know, if, if staff or a commissioner has designated that person, then they could be given further latitude. I don't know. Is that fair?
Gets a kind of a chair and commissioner decision.
I mean, I, yeah, and I, I read, there, there's some pretty good topics on this matter and you do have to be uniformed and fair to everyone, for sure. And I want to do that. But certainly, some people need more than five minutes for, for specific items.
This is where one thing, sorry, Joe, but also if we know things are going to be coming up, we can have an agenda item and then it's not the public comment. You're not limited to five minutes and then the background information will be provided. That'd be another way to address some of this is if we know someone's coming in.
Here again, that's a discretion of-
The chair.
Yeah. I think maybe a little bit of work on that.
Put everything in to cover everything.
Yeah, we agree.
In that vein, I was thinking about the policy that, that this board approved and adopted in connection with the pretty furry wind conditional use prevent application, which had gone to extensive public hearing hour, 20 hours or more to the planning commission, which is where the public hearing is supposed to be conducted. And the board knew that it was a, a great interest in it and controversial in many respects when it would come before you. And, and the question was, because you don't conduct a public hearing at that stage, you could, but the law states a public hearing is before the planning commission and under the circumstances of that case, that's where you wanted the evidence to be presented. And you did not want to turn the occasion for you to take the recommendations of the planning commission for action. You did not want to conduct another public hearing to go through the same situation again. And so you adopted that policy, which limited the public comment. And I was thinking about how that specific policy, that one type of situation, it may come around again in the future when you have, in fact, you're going to have, it's, it's not a conditional use prevent application, but you have proposed new zoning regulations with respect to wind energy, a subject that certainly will draw a lot of public attention. And to what extent is the policy you're adopting today would , would address those events where you have a lot of people and significant public input and your ability to reasonably control them. And so I would, I was thinking about that as you were talking about it. And the law of unintended consequences, have you take that into consideration when we're adopting this policy?
I, I think it might be worth adding a section in here on the basis of the, the guidance from staff, that, that these, these could be changed based on, on the particulars of, of the, the agenda item. Certainly, the entire commission can decide to, to agree or not agree with, with staff's recommendation, but giving some, some leeway here for, for staff to provide guidance on, on public comment. I mean, I, I agree with Joe that there, there's likely going to be some statutory restrictions on certain comments and we want to, I mean, you know, and we would, but it would, it would be better if someone didn't say, well, the, the gen, the, the, your, your policy here says I can. And Joe's same old state statute says you can't. And then just creates conflict, so.
Well, I think you could put a phrase in there, something like the, the board discretion to revise this guideline under, it retains the discretion to revise this guideline under circumstances of the days appropriate.
Yeah.
And that allows you, but the sentence in there didn't give you that discretion if that's acceptable to you.
And also, you can look up ahead, back, I should say, on the agenda background information. That includes, should a citizen want to do that, they have to submit similar, similar background information if applicable. And so they have to submit that to the county administrator, which that to me helps define a little bit about the reasons for wanting to make a, a, a comment on an agenda item. As well, it gives them the discretion to me also with the county administrator and the commission.
That covers really most of this policy. Have some notes to make some changes and want this to be brought back next week?
Let's bring it back next week because it was just discussion item today anyway, even though we could have accepted it if we wanted to. But let's look at those questions brought up by the commissioners.
Hey, I have one, one other quick comment. Would it be fair to adopt kind of a general use of Robert's Rules of Order? I assume that's the way we operate the meeting.
I think that's in the state statutes, isn't it?
Is that, is that true? Okay.
Oh, I don't know. I'm sorry. I need, you have, I need, Mr. Hurst, you referring to the, the statute allows the board to conduct his meetings in any manner of themes appropriate? Or, or were you referring-
I'll be referring-
I think that's informally what, what, what board members have said that they referred, you know, would not-
I thought, I thought maybe it was in a state statute. That's why I was curious.
I don't know that it is, but I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I, just sitting in the back last year, I think a couple of times, you know,
I'll have to get a copy of that.
I think a couple of times even staff or Joe citing that information might be helpful in a, in a disagreement amongst the commissioners and, and an encouragement for staff to remind us if, if that occurs might be helpful.
Yeah. Agree.
Another thing I'll ask, and we'll make those changes and have a draft, but this shows that it'd be effect on the two meetings a month would be effective February 2021. Since this hasn't been adopted yet, do you want that to remain in here or to remove that and just it's changed when you guys want to change it?
Well, I think we're still potentially adopting this in January, so I don't see any need to change that.
Okay.
I'm fine with that. Also, as long as Robert's Rules of Order follows.
I appreciate this because I, I think this sort of structure would be very helpful in the future. It would have helped on a number of occasions in the past, so.
All right. Thank you, Frank, for going through that and Commissioner Sellers for requesting that to be gone through, item by item. And county administrator report?
Okay. As I kind of mentioned up there, I was just going to let you know that Granicus, the online agenda software from Granicus, I was mentioning in a work session last year, will be on the agenda, probably the meeting of February 9th. So I'm just giving you a heads up. And then just in case you don't know, the city of Hutchinson has their State of the City address tomorrow morning at 8:30. If you want to register, it's on the Chamber website. That's all I have.
All right. Commissioner Freezon, do you have any commission comments, report?
Can you come back to me? I'm going to pull up my notes. Sorry.
Okay. Mr. Sellers?
I, I guess I just wanted to comment, appreciate Doug Smith coming in this morning and I'm sorry about his loss of his mother due to COVID. And I think his remarks about all of us being good citizens are certainly appropriate. Thank you.
I just have one comment that has to do with, I hope Commissioner, Senator Stephan can work this through. But I had an occasion to visit in a group with the Majority Leader of the House this weekend and came away with feeling that the House leadership needs further explanation of why the transparency bill needs overhauled or adjusted with respect to counties, is how it applies to counties, their responsibilities, the county costs, and timeframes. I just came away from that meeting feeling that the, that the House leadership is concerned more with how much their house may have gone up rather than the content of the bill. So that's a- So that's the only comment I had. Commissioner Freezon?
Yeah, I, as I stated earlier, I think the vaccine rollout is of utmost importance to the entire nation and anything we can do to assist from a county perspective, we should be doing. And I've reiterated to Randy and the Health Department that I personally would like to see any request or any request for resources that Health Department needs to do this right. I know, and I'll get you guys a copy, there was a copy of, or there was an article in the Wall Street Journal about how some of the failures with the vaccine rollout are in fact now local failures. And it's just, some of it's, it's not because there's not really good people and people that are working very hard, it's because either they don't have the resources to do what they need to do or there's been, I mean, some of it's, it seems as though related to the lack of communication upstream. And so I've encouraged the Health Department to plan for a continued lack of communication and just to have plans ready. And I know Randy is aware of my concern and I hope you guys share the concern about the importance of this. And I, you know, Mr. Chairman, I would like to see the vaccine update as a standing agenda item for a while until we feel like we're out of the woods on this issue. To me, it's just, it's so important that we, in order to get, I'm with people on, you know, we want to get out of these restrictions and mandates, and I think this is just a key component to doing that. And so if we can continue to signify the importance at this level to the Health Department and the administration by keeping that on the agenda, I would appreciate that being done. And then I had a question. I thought, what was the generator purchase? Randy, was the generator purchase on the consent agenda?
No, I believe that'll be the next meeting.
Okay.
Harlan and Harv will be here to discuss it.
Okay, and it looked like, I know from our experience at Ideatech, generators are kind of hard to come by right now.
It's four to six months a week.
I was wondering if we could encourage them to look at a temporary solution?
Right now they have a generator from the sheriff's office.
Okay, good. Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I have seen generators on Purple Wave and Big Iron also, as I'm sure you have too, that if necessary, as they come up and as a standard, there's an extra one, that might be possibilities too, and I'm sure they could look at that. So, county councillor, any?
Hi, the attorney for Ideatech and I discussed the contract that you asked me to come back with for services, telephone services with ideas after we discussed this Thursday and I hope to, he, hope have something to me by today. I know there's some infrastructure components of that which they provide to get started on, so if I get a proposed contract that Randy and I are satisfied with by, certainly by Friday of this week, at the latest, I'd like to add that as an agenda item next Tuesday and I will proceed it as circulated to you independently, so.
Okay.
Trying to move on as quickly as we can.
Thank you.
That's it.
I'd just like the meeting notes to reflect that I have a conflict of interest in that matter, so I'd prefer not to be provided a copy of that if that's appropriate.
So noted.
Well, yes.
It worked.
So noted, I can discuss that with Daniel.
Okay.
I think providing of information is one thing, I think it's participation in the decision, that's the issue. I appreciate you bothering us on that.
Entertainer motion for an executive session?
I move that this board recession to executive session to discuss non-elected personnel, that being the annual evaluation of the county administrator for 60 minutes. No binding action will be taken during this executive session. Any amendments or revisions to the county administrator's contract will be considered and acted upon at our January 26th agenda meeting. I ask that Randy Partington remain for the executive session. At the close of the executive session, the regular meeting will reconvene and the board will adjourn for the day. And I further move that this session start at 11 a.m.
Second.
Any discussion? Not, roll call please.
Mr. Freezon?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Yes.